The meeting of Prairie City Council will now come to order. Ms. Bynum, would you serve five more please?
Yes. Councilmember Rowland. Councilmember Randall. Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Wallace.
President.
Thank you ma'am. Today's Monday, January twenty-seventh. It's six p.m. exactly. If we could stand for the invocation of pledge and Governor Hayes if he were due us the honor of leaving this invitation received.
I'll give thanks unto the Lord, for he is good and mercy endure forever. Father, we thank you for the city of Prairie View, for the mayor and the councilmen. Men and women, thank you for these our citizens. We pray for this city, we pray for the county, we pray for the United States. May you bless the agenda and let the community in peace among the members of Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item is citizen comments. Ashley Jackson.
Good evening, councilmembers, citizens, and friends. I wanted to bring something up that was a little discouraging to me. What I have here on my phone is a letter to Judge Duhan. It is a letter about an early voting place from you Mayor Allen. It was a little discouraging to me because one of the statements that you used as a voting solution was permanent residents have never been forced to go onto the PVA MU campus to vote. Many of these residents are uncomfortable around hundreds of young adults for many reasons, including some of them being disrespectful in both the use of language and manner of dress. That was very discouraging to me, seeing as I've been in Prairie View since fall of two thousand twelve. As that may be true, I don't believe that it is a solution that should have been included in your letter. Because it's... It just depicts students as the main reason as to why the campus should not be a voting place. And seeing as students make up a large population of the city when school is in session, I think it would be more encouraging to receive support from the mayor instead of a discouraging statement. Because when I speak to citizens, they're happy to see me. They're happy to see my friends. They're happy to see us around and get involved with us. Now, when you say that and their language and the manner of dress, I learned how to dress from Prairie View. I don't get in trouble at work for how I dress, and my friends don't either. So I think that's something maybe you should revisit. And maybe, you know, speak to some citizens who are engaged with the students and see how they really feel. Because I don't believe that that's necessarily true for majority of residents in Prairie View, from what I have seen and from what I know other students have seen being engaged with the community. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention and let you know that not even, not just me, but a lot of students were discouraged by that statement because they feel as though it was a dividing statement. And so, just that. And then I have on there item eighteen as well, but I'll wait until that item comes to the agenda.
Isis Collins?
She's in the restroom. She only has item eighteen on there, she said.
Daniel Alexander III?
Hello everybody. Unfortunately, the rules of this great chamber won't allow me going into detail about the fraudulent undermining and misrepresentation that the mayor of this city has portrayed. But trust me, there are many. Mr. Mayor, members of this council, and the great citizens of Prairie View, I stand before you today in opposition to the mayor's letter that was sent to Judge Duhan right here by Mayor David Allen on January third, two thousand twenty regarding the location of voting polls. I'm just gonna kind of break down the letter. It says, "We, the cities of Prairie View, elected officials and seasoned citizens. First, Mr. Mayor, did you receive a consensus from this chamber before speaking as elected officials? There are five members of this city council and one mayor. This is not a dictatorship. This is more, there is more than just your voice within the city of Prairie View. It is my understanding that there were many..." The letter goes on to say, "It was my understanding that there were many meetings held at Prairie View A&amp;M University prior to receiving input from Prairie View landowners who paid taxes and have never been mandated to vote on the university campus. Residents are the ones who in the city pay county and city taxes. Their rights and concerns matter too." Mr. Mayor, all respect to all the citizens ended here today and all of them across the city. But as far as I'm concerned, the students are the ones who keep this city alive and vibrant. One of the main reasons the city has not had any past economic success in the past years is because the number of general citizens cannot maintain the economic development needed to keep the doors open at these establishments when these students are away for the winter and summer months. With that, we pay taxes too. And Mr. Mayor, you know better than anyone that if we did not, what resources would you have to govern this city? On that matter, the location of the voting polls. Prairie View students in almost every class since almost for about fifty years have stood up against the suppression of student votes. And you, Mr. Mayor, are helping the county's longstanding tradition in suppressing our very vote. I understand the need of the university's student body and its leaders to work with the city and its students' leaders to work for feasible and comprehensive solutions on behalf of the city. What I am against, Mr. Mayor, is you inaccurately depicting and misrepresenting my constituents of the student body. The Waller County Community Center is approximately one thousand feet from the Memorial Student Center. This is a false statement that you wrote in the letter to Judge Duhan. As according to Apple and Google Maps, the MSC is point six miles away from the Waller County Community Center. A majority of PVA MU students on campus and in the city currently walk or drive on a daily basis to the U.S. Postal Office, which is next door to the Waller County Community Center. Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Jones?
I move to give an additional minute to Mr. Nathan.
Second. It's been properly moved and seconded that the speaker received an additional minute. All those in favor, say aye. Alright.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Out of all four of my years at PVA MU, I myself have not been to the postal office. I've only been to the postal office twice, nor have I drove past it frequently. This is not part of my daily commute. The students do not walk or drive near the postal office on a daily basis, making that statement false as well. Permanent residents have never been forced to go onto the PVA MU campus to vote. Many of these residents are uncomfortable around hundreds of young adults for that many reasons, including some being disrespectful in both manner of language and dress. This is what got me the most, Mr. Mayor. You come on our campus parading around these hundreds of students smiling to get their vote when it's election season. And you write a letter to the county judge depicting my fellow students in a manner that society already has on African Americans. How dare you? I am immensely disgusted and I even more disappointed in the actions displayed by the elected leader of this city. One who jumps in pools and comes to parties and showed up every day on our campus to get the attention of these hundreds of students. Prairie View A&amp;M University students have been fighting for access to the ballot for almost five decades. For the students at this university, to the alumni, and to those specifically who come before me, who fought day in and day out for a polling place on our campus, stand on my shoulders today when I say I hope you enjoy the rest of your term here in office.
Isis Collins? Now, Ms. Collins, you said item eighteen. Did you want to speak now or when that item comes up?
Yeah, I speak now.
Okay, go ahead.
Nathan pretty much... But yeah, you have a lot of students upset about your letter, Mayor. It was very disrespectful towards the students. I remember you vividly coming to my classroom asking for us to vote for you a few years ago. So I wonder how you plan on winning the next election without the students when you're disrespecting them in public documents and you're lying on top of that. But, you know, we'll talk about that in, like he said, you know, I hope you enjoy the rest of your term. So I want to talk about the Panther Hill nineteen-hour water shutdown that happened this weekend. Nineteen hours, from three o'clock, two thirty, three o'clock p.m. until the next day at, I believe, around ten to eleven a.m. We didn't have any water at all. No water coming from our faucets. But even before that, we've had multiple emergency shutdowns. And this one was kind of weird because we usually get a notice, and if they need more time, they'll send another notice, and if they need more time, they'll send another notice. We received a notice that they were gonna shut the water off at three o'clock, and that'll be back up in two hours. We received no notice at all, not a phone call, an email, a text message, or anything from anybody at Panther Hill in regards to this shutdown. And the email response that we got back from them was, "We do what we do, what we do what we can for you guys, our tenants." So there was no remorse in the letter. There was no, "I'm so sorry for the water being shut off." There was no sense of, "Okay, why did this happen, and why do we keep having these water shut offs in Panther Hill? Why does that Panther Hill? What's going on? What's up with the water situation at Panther Hill? Like, is there an answer that anybody up here can give me about the water situation at Panther Hill? Why we've had three water shutdowns in the past month since school has started? Why is this stuff happening? Why does the water smell like sewage? Why are students complaining about skin rashes and skin issues because of the water? Like, is this not a... I just don't understand why you endorse a place that's not safe for students. Like I said, I vividly remember you coming to my sociology class to promote yourself and to promote Panther Hill in twenty sixteen, spring of twenty sixteen, and in twenty seventeen. So I don't understand how you can endorse a place that's not even safe. It hasn't even been inspected. Why do you endorse this place? And then you came to Panther Hill, went during the water shutdown, and it... What is the purpose of you being there if there's no help? What messages are sent to us? Like, are we not the same? Is there no respect for students the same as there is for the other citizens in the community? Well, obviously not, because your letter says that we're disrespectful in our manner of dress. I mean, is that your plan to get people to vote for you? Do you think you deserve to be the mayor again after all that you put students through? You disrespect us on a daily basis, every day. Just not even by speaking, just your looks. I see how you look at me when you see me. It's disrespectful. And I have no respect for you, and a lot of students have lost a lot of respect for you. Now, I don't need no more talking. I'm good.
Thank you ma'am. Ashley Jackson?
Yes. Mayor of City Council, residents. I'm here to comment on House Bill eighteen eighty-eight by Senator Fittipan, State Representative Ray Vana, in the eighty-sixth legislature session. The election code was amended and had the intended effect of limiting broad voter access to their traditional polling sites. Waller County went from nineteen to twenty voting sites to four. This bill, along with the bill that prohibited straight party balloting, in effect became a voter suppression bill. They had the predicted effect on communities like Prairie View and did not recognize the true intent of these bills and caused us to turn inward on each other and further divide the voters by economic class and residential status. Maryland's letter of January third, two thousand twenty, to County Judge Trey Duhan played right into this trap. The opening statement of this letter read, "We, the city of Prairie View elected officials and seasoned citizens, appreciate you and Miss Kristy Easton meeting with us on voting location issue. It is my understanding as mayor, there were two or three meetings at Prairie View receiving input from Prairie View landowners who pay property taxes and have never been mandated to vote on the university's campus." That's not true. This David Maryland is in keeping with the Willie Lynch syndrome at his best. He pits seniors against the youth, homeowners versus people that rent. Many homeowners pay property taxes derived directly or indirectly from Prairie View A&amp;M University and the students. Property taxes come mainly from apartments rented to students. Sales taxes come largely from the university. These students are taxpayers. Residents of the city have had to vote on campus. By times, we voted at H.T. Jones Elementary School. We voted in the bottom of the Memorial Student Center because the city was renting small spaces for city halls, and we didn't have room for voters, so we voted at the Newman Center. And when it was booked, we voted on campus at H.T. Jones and in the student center. So we have had to go on campus to vote. And I managed the student center for several years, and I kept that poll open. Residents, you'll quote Mayor, "Residents are the ones in the city who pay county and city taxes, and as such, their rights concern and concerns matter too." Again, students are residents, and as mayor, please try to unite us and not divide. To say permanent residents have never been forced to go onto the campus to vote, and many residents are comfortable around hundreds of younger adults for many reasons, including some of them being disrespectful in both the use of language and manner of dress. Mayor, you must love the people to serve the people. The people, and we sometimes forget, that we were those same students. And it takes a village to help raise our children. Until we constructed the current postal office and community center, residents came on campus to get their mail in the student center. And the majority of our residents are honorable and respectful of seniors, and these students are honorable and respectful of these seniors and others. But in all this divisive discussion, you never mentioned House Bill eighteen eighty-eight, that bill the court. And I would ask the residents and the students to research that bill. It's a voter suppression bill. You need to research. You can get it online in Texas Legislature online. And there's a series of federal and state legislation that can be classified as voter suppression bills. Just my third second, I'll be...
Alright. I move that we extend the time of additional minute. Second.
All in favor?
Alright.
Just second.
Alright. As leader of this city, I hereby in respectfully request that you rescind this divisive letter via resolution and join with the other communities of Waller County to follow the lead of the students in fighting for the restoration of their voting boxes. Everybody in Waller County is affected by this. This was an ideal title to unite this county and not divide. It's the House bill that Duhan is the only one stood up there and said it to you. He said it was an unfunded mandate, and it was a bad bill. This bad bill with this unfunded mandate is negatively affecting every community in Waller County. And I would urge you to pass a resolution in support of these kids. They're leading us, and we need to follow their lead. And Mr. Mayor, on some side note, you made the opening comment that you're the largest recruiter of students in Prairie View history. I'd like to know when you did it and how many students you recruited. That would help me in making sure I keep a good record of your team. Thank you very much.
Marie Harden?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, those in attendance. I was born and grew up here in Prairie View. And during that time, there were numerous utility outages. Everything was done on the campus. We got, I don't know how we did the electricity, but everything came from the campus. Sometimes residential areas and dormitories. We had dormitories back then, and we didn't have apartments. Entire dormitories, our entire sections of the campus were either without water or without electricity. We don't need to do the same thing the same way. Now that we are incorporated as a city, we have robo calls. So I would ask this council, this mayor council, to try to alleviate this problem because for you to be without water from two to ten, whether you are in residential housing or student housing, no one should have to endure that. So in order to help alleviate this problem, I'm asking this mayor and this council to come up with a resolution or ordinance where if the water or any utility is gonna be out for any extended amount of time to immediately, not an hour later, to immediately notify city hall, someone here, up here in the council, so we can put out a robo call. And we have choices. If it's gonna be out all that time, okay, maybe I need to go to Cypress, or maybe I need to go over to a friend's house. Or maybe I just want to sit here and sit it out. But you have choices, but let's make sure that those choices are available. If you don't know about it, you can't do anything about it. So I'm asking this council to work on resolution or ordinance that property owners must immediately contact city hall if there's gonna be an extended outage. Thank you.
Darrell Glover?
Good evening, everyone. And on behalf of the Panther Hill situation and water outage, I would just like to say this. In the future, I would like, the same thing with Mayor Allen was saying, need to get with the management to notify us as a city, so we can notify those people that you call students, we call them customers, to let them know if there's gonna be any kind of delay in service. And also, any management, anyone that manage any apartments, to notify us as a city if you're gonna have a water outage at those apartments to keep this from happening, because I got a disturbing call at seven forty in the morning asking, "Why was the water off?" Unbeknown, management had cut it off, didn't notify us. We were out running around trying to figure out what's going on, and that was kind of disturbing to me when the man told me seventeen hours. That's just not right. And I don't want that to happen under my wife ever again. So like I said, we would like to try to get the ordinances of our resolution together so if any service has to be interrupted at any apartment, just like we call out robo calls for our citizens, their citizens too. I want everybody to get the same fair shake on this deal. Thank you.
Peter Brown?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Now or on items?
Well, we could add sixteen to seventeen. I would just like to say right now, a general comment?
I think it's a max council of three minutes now and, I mean, three minutes total, right?
Alright, it's three minutes now, three minutes later.
Three minutes now and a total of three minutes later. If they speak on more than one, it's not three.
Oh, okay. Three minutes now and then a total of three. Okay, go ahead, ma'am.
Oh, good. Now, it's a total of six minutes.
Somebody for the items. If you speak on multiple items, then the total is...
Council, would you go ahead, please? What's the total time?
I would actually need to look it up.
But she gets three minutes now, and then for all the items, what's the total?
So I can have a, I want to be clear before you start my time because this council, the mayor, is saying one thing, and this council, the mayor, is saying something else. So if I, general comment, you have three minutes. And if you want to speak specifically on other items in the agenda, you have a total of three minutes. So altogether, you could have a maximum of six. Okay, gotcha.
I just wanted to take a couple of minutes now, or even a minute now, to say that thank the people that came out for the Prairie View Economic Development Corporation meeting. The other day, we had a wonderful meeting. We got so much accomplished in terms of local businesses as well as international projects that the city is now being involved in. And what I would recommend that would happen as far as the city council is involved, especially Ms. Bynum, that in the future, we have an item on each city council agenda, once a month, not each one, but once per month, every month, have an item on the city council agenda where members from EDC can update city council on the various projects that we're involved in. Because we had people come from all over. We even had people that flew in for the meeting. And we had, Councilman Jones came by, and it was such a positive uplifting environment. Everybody was excited. Everybody was happy. And we're making progress real fast. And so, and then we had some food too that made a difference. We had a company, a catering company that bought samples of food. So I am humbly requesting that we have an opportunity every month because I know we do semi-annual report, but it's so much going on so fast that you all need to be updated on a regular basis of what EDC is doing. So that's what I'm requesting. Hopefully, you can act on that.
Can I ask a question for pleasure, sir? You're asking for like a monthly report to be on the agenda, like, to give like a monthly report from EDC. That would have requested?
Yeah, at one time, Councilman Rowland had asked for that, and for some reason, the departmental reports or whatever got taken off. And I'm requesting that that item at least once a month. We have our meeting on Thursday, so probably the very next meeting would be a good time to do it.
So do you let Ms. Bynum know when you all ready to be at the table?
Can we put it straight on the agenda? Because on the card it said, or in the ordinance said, we could put it, ask to be directly on the next agenda.
But will one council have to do that every time?
Well, no, we don't have a discussion during the city's agenda.
Yeah, we can put that agenda item. If I'm not mistaken, we can put that agenda item on the next one. You got that, Ms. Bynum?
Item one, discuss and take action on the approval of the city council's special meeting minutes dated December sixteenth, two thousand nineteen. What's council's favor, Councilman Jones?
I move that we pass city council's special meeting minutes dated December sixteenth, two thousand nineteen.
Second. It's been properly moved and seconded that item one, special council meeting minutes dated December sixteenth, two thousand nineteen, be passed. You go to motion.
I have it written.
You ready, Councilman Jones?
Is there a reason why agenda item number five, the most important, one of the most important issues on the agenda, did not state any of the motions that we asked of the mayor? So I would ask that...
Well, we have a motion on the floor right now. Are you coming outside the minute?
I'm stating my unwritten one.
Okay, go ahead.
In the minute, there is no response to agenda item number five, which means that there are no minutes. So I'm asking that this agenda item be postponed until we have the minutes of number five, because we had several motions that came out of there.
And number five from the sixteenth?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Ms. Bynum, did you get that?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll move my motion.
Okay. So item one has been removed. Item two, discuss and take act...
We have a motion on the floor about the T.P. withdrew his motion, so we have to put a motion on the floor. Mr. Mayor, I move that we postpone December sixteenth, twenty nineteen, city council's special meeting minutes to our next city council meeting.
Second. It's been properly moved and seconded. You go to motion. Ready for the questions? Councilman Jones?
My frill amendment would be to reflect the item that was happening in number five.
Wasn't regarding the money? And we're clear on number five being added, Ms. Bynum?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, Senator. Item two, discuss and take action on the approval of the city council meeting minutes dated January thirteenth, two thousand twenty. What's council's favor?
Yes.
Councilman Jones?
I don't have any. All right. You don't have a minute? I move that item number two be postponed to the next meeting.
Has been properly moved and seconded. Item two be postponed to the next meeting. For the motion, ready for the question? All those in favor? Ayes have it. Item two is also postponed to the next. Uh, item three, discuss concerns regarding a septic tank, Cookie Matthews.
She's not your mayor?
Okay.
I have a question regarding, because the next time that we put it on the city council meeting, she doesn't come, then it can't be brought back up, so.
I'm not gonna, right, that's what could be on the next one. I'm gonna wait until I speak with her and find out when she's actually available.
Okay, that's what I was asking. So we want to put this on the next.
Right.
Okay, item four, update on the James Moon's Parkway grant.
Mr. Nicky, you said? I'm, I'm clear. Is this the same agenda item that I asked about the ED grant, EDA grant, the update?
Yes.
It is the same thing? So why doesn't number four reflect what city council voted for?
Did the city council vote on it?
No, the city council voted on this at the last, in our last meetings that carried over. And so I'm trying to figure out why the agenda didn't properly read what we're talking about, because it's not just James, it was about the EDA grant and this total update, and I asked for Nicky to be here. Now, if the mayor kind of, you know.
No, I, I changed it, because that is the EDA grant, and to get the public notice of what you're talking about, they needed to be more specific.
Do you want me to update on all the grants or just the EDA grant? EDA, okay. All right, so that's the grant over here on, on James Moon's to, to put on Walder's tour. And we opened construction bids back in December. We got, I think, eleven bidders, got some good bids on it. And we're just in the process of getting approval for the council to award those construction bids. And we're still, there's four outstanding items to get, so we can make up some middle to EDA to get that. We're out with it.
And I think you had some minutes on that, Ms. Bynum?
No, I don't have any, any practice, the minutes.
But we submitted those minutes to, to Houston.
Yeah, yeah, I got that, yeah. What we're outstanding is, uh, we need the bid tabs, official bid tabs on it. We need, um, the letter of recommendation, and then we need the bidders, the low bidders bid bond. That's all needs to come from the project engineering. And then we need the ad and affidavit from the newspaper.
And I believe we received the letter from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers.
Yes, we got that.
So we've got a few things here.
Ayes have it, sure.
Councilman Jones?
Hey, how you doing?
Pretty good.
Nice to formally meet you. I talked to you over the phone. Thank you for coming to the meet. In the recording, what you talk about, did you-